Call to order, a regular meeting of the Beverly City Council on Monday, October 4th, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Copeland?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty? Flowers? Hausmann?
Here.
Rand? Rotundo?
Here.
And Guansey?
I am here. Councilor Hausmann, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, October 4th, 2021. Ms. Kent, here's my smile. Thank you. Confirming member access as a preliminary matter, this is Part 1, seat President of the Beverly City Council. Before we get started, I'd like to confirm that all members in person who anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Thumbs up, wave, whatever works. Thank you. Good evening. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting and public hearings will be conducted via remote means. We do not have any public hearings on the agenda tonight, which is nice. It means I have to read less. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may do so in the following manner. It is recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. No in-person attendance of members of the public would be permitted, and public participation or any public hearing conducted during this meeting shall be by remote means only. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me and the chair to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read once again Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22: All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless a agreed-in-subcommittee actually notified in assembly for the purpose in hand and signed by the majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote or any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting indolubitably will forth return to the full council. So for those of you that are new tonight, it just means that rather than refer things to committee and break for committee work, we'll take care of everything and vote on motions and orders on the floor. If six of my colleagues agree. So Ms. Kent, could you please do a roll call vote, so that we're able to do that?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty? Flowers? Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. And now, we are going to hear from Dean Berg from Green Beverly, but our Sustainability Director, Irina Keefe, would like to make a few comments and then introduce Mr. Berg. Ms. Keefe, hello.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to recognize that our mayor, Mayor Cahill, is in the house tonight. Ms. Keefe?
Good evening, everybody. So I have had the pleasure of working with Dean Berg and several Green Beverly volunteers who've been really actively participating in the Clean Energy Advisory Committee since I joined the city, really. So I'm kind of tempted to say that the stars aligned when Green Beverly started to kind of shape up as a formal nonprofit organization, just as the Resilient Together Climate Action Planning process was wrapping up. But the reality is that Green Beverly was born out of this tremendous effort from a number of really passionate community members that are really dedicated to addressing our climate emergency. So they're really dedicated, I think, to community education. So by providing one-on-one coaching with community members, their motto at the farmer's market, you may have heard, is "Life hacks for green living," and also from planning workshops that are run by subject matter experts and neighbors. I do see Green Beverly as this valuable grassroots resource that makes the work that our city does even go even further and have a bigger impact. So Dean Berg is the Executive Director of Green Beverly. He has years of experience working in citizen eco-friendly education, both in New England and in parts of Europe. So I'm really grateful to be able to work with Dean, kind of turn that energy and attention here to Beverly. And I think we are all fortunate to have this committed and quickly growing coalition of volunteers that make climate action easy. And I think this is a really important part, is fun. So we can touch on an example or two of how the city and Green Beverly can have a magnified impact by collaborating and coordinating together. I know that we have been meeting regularly for the last several months to kind of work together on everything, from apartment recycling to researching some unbiased resources about rooftop solar. So I really look forward to all that the city and Green Beverly can accomplish through our collaboration. And Dean, I will hand it over to you to share more about the kind of the full origin story of Green Beverly and the mission and its goals. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Keefe. Mr. Berg?
Great. Thank you, Irina. Mr. President, councilors, other attendees, thanks for inviting us in this evening to introduce Green Beverly. And over the next eight minutes or so, we'll talk about how we can build a sustainable Beverly together. So we're going to do this in a what, why, how fashion. You guys, let me just confirm, you can see my screens, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll start with what is Green Beverly? We are a nonprofit on a mission. So our mission is to help all Beverly residents and businesses lead more sustainable lives through actionable information, inspiration, and education. So if I just take a second to break this down, we focus on all Beverly residents and businesses. So we take a very equitable approach. Doesn't matter if you're a homeowner, a renter, a small business, a large business, we take a very equitable approach. Sustainable lives. So how do we define sustainability or sustainable lives? Green Beverly defines sustainability as things that we as residents and businesses have control over. So these are our homes, our heating, our cooling, our water, electricity. They are how we get from point A to point B, our transportation. They are what we eat, what we buy, our goods and services that we buy. All of those encompass sustainability for Green Beverly. Actionable information. Core to our mission is to inspire action. You know, we certainly provide education and information and communication, but unless we inspire people to act, we feel like we've failed on our mission. So why is our work important? As Irina so clearly articulated, the Resilient Together Climate Action Plan has set the bar fairly high. You know, we've got fairly aggressive goals in Beverly, Beverly and Salem. You can see the goals on the left here. So starting from that point, you may be asking, well, why are we focused on the residential side? Why are we focused on the residents? Our residents control the majority of those greenhouse gas emissions. And if you actually look at the average Beverly household, it breaks down based on this chart. You can see how it breaks down across the five sectors or five categories. Another thing I want to point out here is that the three right columns, the food, goods, and services, those represent things that we buy, again, right? So going back to the resident and local business focus, these are really inseparable from a sustainability standpoint. Forty percent of our average household's footprint is related to what we buy within our food, goods, and services. And we, as residents, we have a million questions related to sustainability. And I'm not going to read through all of these. This is obviously just a sample. But I'll just give one example. So the first one, clothing. Now, let's say that I tore my favorite pair of jeans. I needed a new pair of jeans. I'm not sure what I can do that is more eco-friendly. You know, can I find a pair of jeans at the local thrift store or at the consignment store? Or is there a store in town that can repair my existing jeans? You know, so those are what we call actions. So we have a million questions, and our job is to provide answers to those questions. The question we get most often is, where do I start? What can I do? I do these three or four things. What else can I do? So when we talk about why is our work important, Beverly has set a bar with Resilient Together planning. Our residents are a big part of our carbon emissions, and residents have a million questions. So how do we answer these questions? We do not do this in a vacuum. We do not do this by ourselves. We do this with community collaboration, especially when we look at Beverly's specific challenges and Beverly's specific questions. They require Beverly's specific answers and solutions, and it truly does require the work of all of us, our residents, our businesses, our schools, and the municipality. We want to work with all four of those stakeholders to come up with solutions. And these solutions could be community-wide solutions. These solutions could be individual solutions. And I'll give just two or three examples of community-wide solutions that we're actively engaged in as we speak. So one is helping to understand how we can increase our local food production. Another one is trying to find financially viable solutions for homeowners that may want to switch from oil or gas as a heating solution or as a heating option within their home. Another one may be re-diverting food from our waste stream. We also have individual solutions, working with residents and businesses one-on-one, educating, inspiring action. And as we all know, we all have different lifestyles. We all have different workflows. We all have different daily routines, right? So we need to meet people where they are. So we do this through four different, what we call engagement channels: digital, physical, coaching, and being in the community itself. And I'll just briefly touch on each of these four. So from a digital standpoint, we're revamping greenbeverly.org and not only providing information and education, but also green actions, as I was kind of alluding to when we talked about the jean example. From a physical presence, we're building a sustainability showcase at the Coming Center, at 107Q in the Coming Center. You can see some design concepts here on the screen. We also have a coaching staff that provides one-on-one guidance to residents or businesses that have questions. These are impartial experts. They're not representing a product, not representing a service. They're really there to provide their expertise. And lastly, as I think Irina alluded, being in the community. So this is a picture of an educational workshop we did last week, actually, on backyard composting at the library. So being out in the community for those that want to meet us there. The other aspect of how is having an organizational structure that can support all of this. So core to any organization are the people, right? We have a dedicated, I would say, very passionate group of people. That's about 30-plus strong and growing at this point. We've also created a nonprofit, as Irina alluded, and we're really focused on making sure that we're creating a sustainable business, a business that can sustain itself on an ongoing basis. Now, part of our challenge is that we're delivering a free service here, right? So that leads to the revenue sources. So right now, we have three revenue sources identified: grants, sponsors, and donors. I will close with a quote from a summer intern that worked with us. Her name is Ella. She's a Beverly resident, actually. And she said, "It's been terrific working with Green Beverly over the past three months. I'm impressed with the passion, the energy, and dedication to climate action." And these last four words were the four words that really struck home to me. It gives me hope. You know, that, I will not forget those four words when she said that. For me, that is part of the why. That is why I do this. That's why I think Green Beverly is so important, so important to work with Irina at the city. It gives, in this case, a 20-year-old, it gives her hope, right? And we've got a whole generation that is in that same boat. So two asks of the council, if I may. One is just to be aware of Green Beverly, to have the visibility of Green Beverly, to help spread the word. And a second, as you are talking to your constituents, as you're in the community, as you're in the neighborhood, and you see challenges, or you hear of questions, or you hear of roadblocks as it relates to sustainability, I invite you, please invite us into that conversation. You know, we want to be working with you to find that solution, whether it's community-wide solution or an individual solution. So I will pause there. Thanks for your time, and I'll certainly take questions and comments.
Thank you, Dean. That was great. How about questions from members of the city council? First, we need to thank Council Ed Lodge, Julie Flowers, who set this up. Thank you, Council Flowers. I know you just checked into our meeting a few minutes ago. Glad you're here. Let's go to Councilor Ames.
Thank you. And thank you, Dean, for coming before us and explaining about what you do. I was wondering if maybe through Mrs. Kent, our clerk, you could share this PowerPoint so that we can sort of distribute it out. And I really, I appreciate the work you're doing. Not so much a question. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Councilor Flowers?
Thank you very much, President Guansey. I also don't have a question, just a quick comment. And thank you also for recognizing me and allowing me to come a little bit late from Ward 1. I have a longer drive back from there than Todd does, but I made it. Councilor Rotundo just beat me. So Dean, thank you for coming. And I just wanted to mention what a pleasure it was I got to meet Ella, your intern that you quoted, at the Drive Electric Week event. And she was great and really engaging. I saw her engaging with a lot of members of the public as well. And my question, I guess, just a short one, do you have plans to bring more interns into your organization? Is that something that you think would be part of how you see this sort of working as a network that is both Green Beverly and then the ways that you move out into the community?
Yeah, great question. Thanks, Julie. Absolutely. We had three interns over the summer. We have three interns right now. Would we have more than three? Potentially. But they have been both great from, they provide that perspective, number one. They provide the 20-year-old perspective, which I think is very energizing for me, certainly. And it's also an opportunity for them to be mentored by the different professionals that we have as volunteers within our group. So I think it's been a great partnership so far.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I am really excited about everything that you all are doing and where we can go together with this as a community. And I think, yeah, a great opportunity to have young people to be mentored and to be leaders within the community, both. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flowers. Councilor Copeland?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And thank you, Dean. This is something I'm truly passionate about, the sustainability. And my question to you is, at this current time, what's your capacity to maybe take some of this and bring it out into the wards as far as presentations and information? I love to see something like that, especially in Ward 6.
Yeah, absolutely. We are available. You know, we've got many people that can talk to talk, right, and tell the story. So certainly, let's just be in contact. And when you want us to speak somewhere, we're there.
All right, definitely. We'll touch base. Thank you very much for your hard work and efforts. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dominic. Councilor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dean, nice to see you. And I get to see Wayne as well on the call, which is great. I just want a couple of things. Dominic, Councilor Copeland did just mention about trying to get into the different wards and civic associations, what have you. But I know you and I sat down with Julie DeSilva about a month or two ago and kind of talked from the business angle. How are you coming with, we was talking about capacity levels of purchasing bulk. And I believe from a conversation with Wayne was that you had sat down with some of the community food kitchen people too as well. So that's kind of something that kind of hit me too last week. Is that still on target? Have you had any further conversations?
Yeah, thanks, Todd. It was a pleasure meeting you there a month or so ago. That is one of our active community projects. I didn't have it on the slide, but definitely looking at the different compostable options, to take out compostable options for both the restaurants, for the schools, and for the food distribution organizations. So we're actively doing more research on that and looking at the price comparisons, looking at the availability. As we probably all know, there's certainly a supply chain challenge right now that we're looking at that as well. So that's active and ongoing.
All set, Todd? You got it. Councilor Feldman?
Thank you. And thank you so much for being here to present on this. I care very much about these issues. And I'm really excited to see Beverly kind of on the cutting edge of hopefully implementing some of these policies for our city. And I did speak with Irina for a while at the electric bus event at the middle school last week, and Mr. Miller as well, about hopefully working together to, the biggest issue I have as a counselor in trying to get this information out is that it's really all connected. So when questions come to me about trash and composting and recycling, it's really, it's a DPW question, but it's also rooted in some of these sustainability practices. And I'm really interested in being part of, I don't have an answer, but I'd like to help be part of the solution in terms of streamlining how we get the same information to all of the residents, no matter where they, because I think right now it's almost preaching to the choir of those who would follow Green Beverly and take these practices to heart. But it's actually a connected matter that impacts our budget and our contracts with recycling. And so I just, I want to help be part of streamlining that type of information if we could all kind of work together to get the messaging out to members of the community that are not liking and following Green Beverly in the first place, but it impacts them as well. So.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, let's talk about it with Irina, obviously. So as Irina mentioned, we're meeting every two weeks, and that's one of the things that we're starting to get in sync. The communication is one of the things that we're starting to get in sync with as well. So yeah, let's talk about it.
Thank you, Council Feldman. And Councilor Rand?
Thank you, President Guansey. And thank you, Dean, for being here and presenting Green Beverly to the council. It's really exciting to see the kind of the bullet points of your activity. And I've enjoyed watching Green Beverly interact with people all summer, which has been a blast. And I can see that you're getting people excited who maybe are ready to learn, but also you're getting people excited who have questions and need answers. So I think that's a nice, it's a nice thing that I've been witnessing. I guess I have two questions. One is, well, more a comment and a question. One question is just, I'm curious if you've worked at all or reached out to the Waste Reduction Committee, which I'm sure Ms. Keefe is, you know, keeping you connected to those happenings. And then, before you answer that, a comment that, when I saw your funding source bullet point, basically, it made me think that, you know, you may be aware that every year, there's kind of a call, proposals for some, a small amount of funding that comes out through the mayor's office, actually, for organizations that are meeting certain community needs. So for example, Beverly bootstraps is often included in that they submit a proposal for the work that they do that meets a need in the community that they do the best, right? Nobody else is meeting that need. So I just, that came to my mind when I thought of funding. And I don't know, as we go forward with our resiliency planning, if that's something that, you know, the mayor's office may be accepting requests for proposals for work like what you're starting now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So thank you. I'll go in reverse order. So thank you for the tip on the funding that's available there. We'll pursue that. Back to the first question about the Waste Committee. I believe you were asking about the Waste Committee, right? Yeah, so we're in pretty close contact with Sue Higgins and the Waste Committee. Actually, Sue is one of our coaches on our team. And we probably all know Sue. She does a phenomenal job at responding to questions regarding anything waste-related. So we're in pretty close contact with Sue and the committee. And it's been a pleasure to be at the farmer's market. It's actually been a lot of fun for us as well. And yeah, it's been great. So thank you for inviting us or accepting us to be at the farmer's market.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rand. Anybody else? Mayor Cahill, anything to add before we move on?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. I would just say, one, Councilor Rand, I love the way you're thinking. So let's talk about supporting Green Beverly. Two, in about two weeks, when you meet again, I'm going to ask that Ms. Keefe be on the agenda, because it'll be just about the one-year anniversary of her starting work as our Sustainability Director. And as she, as Dean said, she's been working closely with the team at Green Beverly. What we'd love to do is have her give you an update on all that she's been doing over the past year, because it's exciting work. So I'll leave it at that. I just, I love that we're talking about this. I'm incredibly grateful for Dean and Wayne and the whole group of good people who are making Green Beverly reality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. And I think that's a great idea also. You know, unfortunately, because of the way things have been the past year, we would be interacting with your department heads and the people that answer to you far more often. So it would be great to hear from Irina next week. Mr. Berg, thank you. If anything else comes up that you want to come before the city council, we'd love to hear from you. And you know who to reach out to if you need any help. Get the word out. Thanks again.
Thank you, guys.
And Councilor Ames, thank you for that suggestion. If you could send that, your presentation, to the city clerk's office, that would be great. All right, good stuff. Now we're on to our regular agenda. We do not have any minutes to accept. So Ms. Kent, can we go to communications from his honor, the mayor?
Order number 174. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint subject to review and recommendation Mr. Kevin Andrews, 8 Home Street, Beverly, to serve as alternate member of the Board of Appeals. Mr. Andrews' term will be effective until October 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 175. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $49,680 municipal road safety program grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research. This funding is made possible by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and will be used for traffic enforcement campaigns with the goal of reducing vehicle crashes and the result in injuries and loss of life. Madam General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant, earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant at your meeting tonight. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And our grant director is here with a smile on her face as usual. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guansey. Yes, this is an annual grant that the city receives from EOPS. And I just want to say a thank you to Sergeant Michael Hennaberry, who manages this grant. He does a fantastic job. And this funding is used for DWI checks, crosswalk enforcement, speeding endeavors, and with the goal, again, of reducing the loss of life and crashes. So we're really grateful for this grant. And I didn't see Lasher or Sergeant Hennaberry on the call, so.
Are they here?
I don't, I didn't see them. No, so.
No. Okay. But I don't think we need their approval or their words for us to accept this grant. But does anybody have any questions for Ms. Barrett? Okay, hearing for no questions. I would entertain a motion to approve and accept the grant.
So move.
So move.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey?
Yes. Ms. Kent, 176.
Order number 176. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a $1,000 donation.
Order number 176, Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a $1,000 donation from Mr. James Madugno of Beverly. The donation funds will be used to purchase uniforms for the Beverly Police Department officers. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grants, earmarks, donation, or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting tonight. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I would entertain a motion to accept the donation from Mr. Madugno.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. And I usually see Mr. Madugno anytime between 5:30 and 6:00 every morning. So I will make sure to stop what I'm doing and go out and thank him on behalf of the City Council. 179.
Order number 179, Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded a $150,000 earmark from the Mass Department of Fire Services to upgrade and modernize the fire alarm dispatch systems in the Beverly Fire Department. The fire alarm dispatch funding will be used to purchase equipment and software desperately needed to combine integrated master box digitalizers and radio box receivers. These receivers take in and translate signals from fire alarm control panels in commercial and residential buildings across the city of Beverly. The fire alarm operator then takes the decoded signal and sends the appropriate fire department personnel and equipment to the location of the alarm. The project will not only combine the equipment, but it will put the information in front of the dispatcher. The equipment is currently in four locations in the dispatch area. This project will streamline this dispatch process, decreasing dispatch time and increasing system reliability. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmark, donation, or gift to the city can be extended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant by taking action on this matter tonight. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Ms. Barrett, anything to add on this one?
Thanks, President Guanxi. Yes, I just wanted to thank Representative Jerry Paracella and his staff member Andrea Zalano for advocating for this earmark. We were hoping to have received this in fiscal year '21, but due to the pandemic, we didn't receive any earmarks that year. So this actually came through in August. And it's very needed for the fire department to consolidate and upgrade their fire alarm dispatch system. So we're thrilled to receive that and just want to thank Representative Paracella for advocating for it for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. And nice that you refer, you mentioned his aide, Andrea Zalano, BHS class of 2013, great basketball player.
I didn't realize she was a BHS alumna.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, she's fantastic. And she really, we have a great relationship with her.
Ms. Barrett, this might, this might be a stupid question, but I have to ask it. Different between a grant and an earmark?
So the difference is a grant typically has more compliance on the backend that we have to meet in terms of reporting. And grants can be either reimbursement or drawdown, whereas the earmarks tend to be, tend to be wired in a lump sum. This one actually is not. It's, it's unusual that it's, it's a reimbursement. But most earmarks are, the full money is wired and there's less compliance on the backend, unlike a grant.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. What do we have to do? Do we do that? Do we do a motion? No, yeah, no. So I would entertain a motion. No, I would just, yeah, entertain a motion to approve and accept the earmark.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes, I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from his honor, Mayor Cahill.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Communications from other city offices and boards.
I have to read that late file first.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry. I lost my fastball. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Kent.
Order number 180. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Gregory Howard, 14 Central Street, Number 2, to serve on the Beverly Historic District Commission. Mr. Howard's term will be effective until April 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And we will refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Now may I move on? Thank you.
Yes.
Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 177 from Councils Rotundo and Flowers, Order 1 recap from the School Committee Subcommittee on Finance and Facilities from FY 2022.
Thank you for passing that along, Councilors. I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes.
178. Order number 178, Dear Council Members, this request is to amend the current city ordinance 270-49 by adding a handicap parking sign at 37 Pond Street and 3 Fosse Terrace. These locations will be added to the current city ordinance 270-49 off-street handicap parking. I have conducted site business and have not observed any issues that would result in a conflict to public safety or traffic. I would support the placement of handicap parking signs in these locations. Very respectfully yours, Sergeant Michael Hennaberry. And this is the first reading.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Ms. Kent, we do not have anything coming out of committee this week because of the short week, correct? And we have no communications, applications, or petitions. So unless we're missing something, that would be the end of our meeting?
For this meeting, yes.
This meeting, but we have to go into executive session. And it's so nice when Jesse Dole raises his hand. Mr. Dole.
I was hoping he would.
Good evening. I just wanted to just point out that we still have Order 171, the unfinished business that is the formality that would need to be taken for this, for you to delegate the authority.
Mr. Dole, do we need to do that in executive session or not?
No, that you can vote on 171 based on the discussion that you had last week in executive session and vote on Order 171. And then we can continue, have a further discussion about the, the topic in executive session.
Okay, so we'll, I guess that we'll do that. We'll take action on Order number 171. Do you want to read that, Ms. Kent? Unfinished business from a previous meeting.
Order number 171, Dear Honorable City Council, I am asking for your approval to delegate responsibilities for answering the open meeting law complaint that was filed by Joseph Kane dated September 19th, 2021 pertaining to the City Council's September 13th, 2021 meeting to the City Solicitor's Office. Sincerely yours, Paul Guanxi, Council President.
I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Council Flaherty must be working late at his new job, I'm sure.
He said he was going to be late.
Yeah, I was looking forward to congratulating him about it tonight, but we'll get to him. So now we need to take a roll call. Ms. Kent, help me out.
Julie Flowers, Council Flowers would like to say something.
There you go. Council Flowers, I'm sorry.
No, thank you very much, President Guanxi. Just before we close the public part of the meeting, I just wanted to mention for any members of the public, especially who might be watching, that at the, our October 18th meeting, there'll be a presentation about the redistricting that's happening across the state, but specifically in Beverly to our wards and precincts based on the most recent census data. So I think it might just be helpful for people to know that because it's, although it's not a public process, I think it can be confusing. It might be helpful for people to know that's going to be coming up.
Thank you, Council Flowers.
Thank you.
That'll add to the 18th. That's great. So now, I'm looking. Ms. Kent, we roll call into executive session without the intent, we will adjourn from, we will adjourn from executive session, not returning to our live meeting.
Correct. I believe Jesse Dole, correct? We adjourned and we go to executive session.
Yes, correct. So I would entertain a motion and a roll call to go into executive session. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. So thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Mr. Dole, I did something wrong.
I think you were supposed to read something, maybe. Sorry.
Jesse, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yes, no, Jesse?
Sorry about that. I was trying to unmute myself. You, you actually need to read the purpose, the proposed purpose for entering the executive session. So as it appears on the agenda.
Let's start again. Kent, are we still on? Yeah, and we have a separate link to go on to, so. So I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the open meeting law complaint that was filed by Joseph Kane dated September 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Is that okay, Mr. Dole?
I, I would recommend that it be read as it appears on the agenda pursuant to this particular Mass General Law. And that the, the exception to the open meeting law that you.
Oh, it's right here. I'm, I'm sorry. Let's try it one more time. You'll be glad to be rid of me soon. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A1, purpose number one, to discuss a complaint against public officials, specifically an open meeting law complaint by Joseph Kane dated September 19th, 2021, pertaining to the City Council's September 13th, 2021 meeting. Motion?
So moved.
Roll call, three strikes and I'm out.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. So once again, thanks, everybody, for tuning in, especially those that were here maybe for the first time. And Mr. Berg, you did a fantastic job.
Jesse raised his hand again.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Dole.
I just, does the council intend to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session, or are you going to?
No, we do not.
So I, sorry to be a stickler, but that needs to be part of the motion.
Okay, so I struck, I just struck out. I went 0 for 3. So I gotta get a base hit right here so I can bat 250.
Right.
Good. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 21A1, purpose number one, to discuss a complaint against public officials, specifically an open meeting law complaint by Joseph Kane dated September 19th, 2021, pertaining to the City Council's September 13th, 2021 meeting. We will not be returning into open session and we will adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Philbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. And thanks to my colleagues for your patience. And thanks to Mr. Dole for doing his job. Much appreciated. Good night, everybody. Our next full City Council meeting will be October 18th at 7:00 PM. That is a Monday night. Look forward to seeing you again. Good night.